Is now called to order, the cylinder will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councilors Verdict.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
Raff.
Here.
Afghan.
Here.
Mbo.
Here.
Wenlin.
Here.
Thank you. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to start this evening with a presentation of the If I Were Mayor contest winners. So I'm going to pause and come forward. One moment. And we'll have our winners, please also come forward and join me here in the horseshoe. Thank you. So I'll start by telling you a little bit about the contest, although I know many of you are family and friends, so you probably already know about it, but for our listeners, I'm really energized about this annual contest. We have this sponsored by the Oregon Mayors Association, the OMA, and it's an opportunity for students in grades four through 12 from all over Oregon to share their creative and inspirational ideas of what their city would look like if they were mayor. It lends an opportunity for our youth to express their viewpoints and know that their ideas are being heard. Lake Oswego received over 40 creative and interesting entries this year. And of course, while not every entry could be selected as a winner, each was very informative and helpful in understanding what is important to those who participated and to their peers. So after considering all the entries, first, second, and third place winners were selected in the following categories. There's a poster contest for grades four and five, and an essay contest for middle school students in grades six through eight. And this year, we also included honorable mentions in each of those categories. Joining us this evening is my colleague here, Anna Katerinos. Anna is a senior at Lake Oswego High School, and she's about ready to head off to Tufts. She has been with us for the past two years now, or just one year, oh, you're one year, on the Lake Oswego Youth Leadership Council, which is an opportunity for high school students in Lake Oswego to engage with members of the city council. It's typically a two-year program that Anna's been a part of, and so she joined us on the If I Were Mayor Selection Committee this year. I appreciate her efforts there. And she also recently gave a presentation to the American Association of University Women in January. Anna's poised as a public speaker and an advocate. Make it no surprise that she's a member of the speech and debate team and also model United Nations, one of my favorite high school activities. Beyond Youth Leadership Council, Anna's invested in the community through some of the other cities' youth programs, including the Youth Action Council, which runs through our Parks Department, and the Teen Service Corps, which are accepting applications. We're going to miss Anna here in LOJ and her contributions to Lake Oswego as she leaves for university, but grateful for the time that we got to work together. So I'd like to introduce you to this year's winners. We have Sophia, Lena, Alex, Cara, Lauren, Tesla, and Finley. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Okay, so we're going to start with our poster winners. And with so many creative posters, we decided to include an honorable mention this year. And this is Finley's poster. Finley, Finley, Finley. Finley's clear and concise poster earned the honorable mention in the poster category. His focus here was on pedestrian safety. Now, Finley, come forward, Finley. So Finley's poster, you had a very specific focus on pedestrian safety at intersections, specifically the need for accessible pedestrian systems to make sure that they meet the Public Rideaway Accessibility Guidelines. And you even included these acronyms, and we love acronyms in city government. In addition to including a detailed illustration, Finley used her personal experience to back up her proposal, and our committee was very impressed with Finley's knowledge of the APS and the PROWAG. Those are the acronyms. And so Finley, let's give Finley a big round of applause first of all. Congratulations. Good job. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, first of all? How old are you? What school do you go to?
I'm 10 years old. I'm about to turn 11. I go to Forest Hills Elementary School, and I'm in fifth grade.
Very good. And can you tell the audience here about this idea that you have and why it is so important?
Yes. So my mom has a client who's visually impaired, and she told me a little bit about how we have APS at our crosswalks, and that stands for Accessible Pedestrian Systems. And right now in Lake Oswego, they don't meet the recommended guidelines by PROWAG, which is the acronym. And to fix that, we should have an appropriate lead time for pedestrians before the traffic lights turn green.
Yes, yes. To allow them a little extra time to start through the intersection, yes. And we have that at some intersections, but not all the intersections. Yeah, it's a great idea, a good upgrade. Thank you for the wonderful idea. Let's give you another big round of applause. Congratulations, and go see Anna over there has your certificate. Good job. Now, third place in the, oh my God, come on, stay up here, then we're going to take pictures afterwards. Third place in the poster category went to Tesla Campbell. Tesla, please come on forward. Big round of applause. So Tesla used a combination of painted art, drawings, and text, and acknowledged that a mayor is someone who can make positive change in their local city. She also shared a few things that she would do if she were mayor, and this includes asking residents what they would add or change in the city. Then, after considering their thoughtful suggestions, she would make changes accordingly. It's good. And investing in the best technology to ensure that first responders can get to emergencies in time. It was a very well-done poster. We were very impressed by it. So Tesla, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What school do you go to? What grade are you in?
I'm 10 years old. I go to Westridge Elementary, and I'm in fourth grade.
And what was one of your favorite ideas on the poster?
Well, my favorite idea was getting, like, to add the sports to the schools, because I love sports, and I also love to do the drawings.
What is your favorite sport to play?
My favorite sport is gymnastics, because I'm a competitive gymnast.
And what's a sport, you mentioned adding additional sports to schools. What would be one or two sports that you would like to see added?
I would add, like, soccer or, like, basketball to them.
We have a big soccer fan over here, although he has injured himself multiple times playing it. All right. Well, very good job. Let's give Tesla another big round of applause. Good job, Tesla. Go see Anna over there has your certificate. Now, second place in the poster category went to Lauren Claus. Lauren, please come forward. Let's give her a big round of applause. With use of illustrations and clear written communication, Lauren shared goals that she would pursue if she were mayor. These include giving kids more civic engagement opportunities, such as having a kids' town hall. It's a great idea. And encouraging businesses to create quiet shopping hours for the neurodivergent to help reduce sensory overload. Another great idea. The committee appreciated the sign posted on the business doors indicating sensory-friendly hours. Each goal provided information on why it was important and gave ideas to help implement it. Both very important things. So Lauren, tell us a little bit about yourself. What grade are you in? What school did you go to?
I'm 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Forest Hills.
Oh, very good. And if you were to have a kids' town hall, what are some questions you would ask the kids?
Well, what do you want, what changes do you want to make? What problems do you see? What do you want to do about it? If you see, um, what do you think about our current education system? Our current volunteering system? What do you think about the sports in schools? What do you think about first responders? What do you think about inclusion in our community? And what, if it isn't, if you don't think it's satisfactory, what would you do to change it?
Do you think that our city council should be listening more to the youth voices?
I do think it should. I mean, you have something for high schools, but what about kids in elementary school, middle school?
We're missing the whole category. I know. No, it's a great idea, everyone. Let's give it a big round of applause. Good job. You did a really good job. Anna has your certificate here. Okay, and now for our first place in the poster category went to Cara Miles. Cara, please come forward. Congratulations. So we really loved Cara's poster. Your artistic and detailed poster earned you first place. You had a well-organized and thoughtful poster illustrating that you would encourage sustainability and climate action practices through a variety of programs such as Bike Day, reduction of disposable items, and community gardening. Also, like your colleague before, promote kid involvement in politics by lowering the voting age and forming an all-age political committee. It's a great idea. And delivering services and accessibility to those underserved in our community. This includes establishing inclusive playgrounds, skill building programs, and food drives. All very thoughtful ideas. Cara not only outlined her goals, but she detailed their implementation and the positive outcomes. And as our first-place winner, Cara was entered into the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for a chance to win up to $500. So Cara, please, congratulations again. Tell us a little bit about yourself. What grade you are in?
My name is Cara Miles. I'm in fourth grade. I'm 10 years old. I have.
What school do you go to?
Oh, Forest Hills, and I have three cats.
And you have three cats?
Three cats and two rats. They're all adorable.
And two rats?
Yep.
Do they get along with each other?
That's my cat.
Oh, that's your cat? He helps do the poster?
He did.
Does he have a, he has a pencil in his hand?
Yes, I, he was sitting in a very funny position, so I stuck a pencil in, and he was very happy.
Oh, that's very, now I have to ask you something, Cara. Yes, we love cats. You know that I love cats, too. He knows that. The, uh, there is, in the upper right-hand quadrant, there was an ice cream store, and I just have to know, is that a soft-serve ice cream store or a hard-packed ice cream store? If it was your choice?
Oh, soft-serve, always.
Okay, that's a great, that's a great answer. Let's give him a half five there. Okay, very good. All right, we'll forgive you for the cats, then, because it's soft-serve. Tell us, what is one of your favorite ideas on the poster? You have lots of really good ideas. What's your favorite?
So I feel really strongly about inclusive playgrounds. I feel like everyone deserves to have fun, and I feel like just because they, like, have a decision or something doesn't mean that they can't do stuff.
That's right.
You just have to bend a little bit.
Very well said. That's right. Good job. Thank you very much. Good job again. Everyone, a big round of applause for Cara. Good job. And if you didn't already know, so we have, the posters are all on display in the entrance to council chambers here. Okay, so now we are going to move on to the essay category for the middle school students. And because we received so many well-written essays this year, we did have an honorable mention. And unfortunately, the winner of our honorable mention, Everest Gao, he's unable to be here tonight, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about his essay. Everest is an eighth grader at Lakewood Middle. He's, like I said, he's unable to attend, but he had a very thought-provoking narrative, winning him this honorable mention. So Everest's essay left us a lot to ponder. In his first paragraph, he stated that "as mayor, he would work towards sufficient wellness in our community because the tiny ameliorations we make every day count for a community more worthy than a perfect world." In Everest's closing paragraph, he states, "The truth is, us homo sapiens are easily influenced by our living environment, so a slight mishap can put future generations into turmoil. It is up to those in power, like the mayor, to not only plant the seeds that determine our future, but also harvest the crops that are healthy and consumable. The crops are in a continuum of growth, but leaving them alone for too long is to leave them rotting in perpetual pain until death," end quote. Everest's future holds significant potential for philosophical exploration." There were so many well-written essays, and tonight we have the pleasure now of recognizing the top three chosen by our selection committee. And third place is Alex Wu. Alex, come forward. Congratulations. So with a clear organization and compelling writing, Alex's opening and closing paragraphs definitely summarized what his focus would be as mayor. Alex would create a safer, more sustainable, and more inclusive city by enhancing public spaces. This would include building bike and walk accessible paths to connect neighborhoods to schools, parks, and the downtown. He would also establish community gardens in vacant lots and green spaces so people can grow their own food. Alex emphasizes that public spaces are vital to community health. In addition, Alex addresses homelessness and takes this important topic a step deeper by offering resources to lead a stable life. Alex recognizes that the city is doing vital work for clean energy and wants to continue down that path. Alex, tell us a little bit about yourself. How old you are? What school you go to?
So I'm 14 years old, and I'm an eighth grader at LOJ.
Wonderful. And of all the topics you mentioned, you know, one thing that you brought up was kind of community investments, bringing us closer together. What are some ways in which we can invest in the community that would bring us, kind of, neighbors closer together?
Yeah, so one of my topics was, like, renewable energy, and I think I talked about something called Renewable Energy Day, and one of them was like a science fair where, like, kids could create, like, community energy, like, themed science projects, and that would bring a lot of people together, like, people who are interested in science, people who are interested in, like, renewable energy. And there's also, like, many volunteer events that we could do.
That's very good. Well, thank you very much for your thoughtful essay. Let's give everyone, Alex, a big round of applause. Congratulations. And then come and get your, uh, good job. And now for our second-place winner, Lena Campbell. Lena, come forward. Congratulations. Everyone, give Lena a round of applause. So Lena's approach was a little bit different, but just as important as other entries. As mayor, Lena would focus on the social, emotional, and well-being of residents of Lake Oswego. She acknowledges that loneliness is a public health epidemic and would take the responsibility to try and help Lake Oswego residents of all ages, starting from students to seniors. One of her goals was improving field trips for the elderly so that they could see the world outside of their retirement home. In addition, she would encourage pets in retirement homes, including guinea pigs, to give residents a sense of purpose. And during her free time, Lena would have a bakery that would provide yummy pastries, cookies, or cakes. I think this is, will put you over the edge. The bakery would allow more job opportunities for those who need employment, and Lena recognized the importance of a mayor in engaging with residents. So she would be out in the community engaging with kids, with seniors, and people of all ages. She also realizes that as mayor, she is no better than any person and would make it a priority to interact with folks, which is, which is very good. So Lena, you had a lot of great ideas in your essay, and I have to say, we have recently on the city council been talking about the loneliness epidemic, and we recently created the Community Health and Resiliency Advisory Board to respond to it here locally. But tell us about your favorite idea in your essay. Well, first, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about yourself. What, how old you are and what school you go to?
My name is Lena. I'm 13, and I go to LOJ. I'm in seventh grade. One of my favorite topics that I covered was pets for the senior residents, because it is proven that pets are very helpful for helping loneliness and stress and anxiety. And oftentimes, elder people are sitting at home alone, and they don't have anybody or anything. And so if they had a pet or something that could be with them, they would probably help their loneliness and just their mental health.
Yeah, that's right. You know, I was, interesting little thing, I was reading an article today about this, and there's even, if you can't have a pet, there's people that have pet rocks, and something, they will speak to the rock, and it helps. Even if you can't have the guinea pig, you can speak to the rock. So anyway, great job. Congratulations. Really appreciate your essay. Give him a round of applause. And now for our first-place winner in the essay contest, Sophia Han. Sophia, congratulations. And as first place winner, like in the poster contest, Sophia is going to be entered into the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for a chance to win the top prize of $500. So Sophia's well-crafted and organized essay was notably distinct within its category for a number of reasons. In addition to articulating her desire to address key concerns across the city, Sophia demonstrated a clear and insightful overview of the city's services and the mayor's role, highlighting the mayor's essential skill of active listening. Very good. She exhibited how solutions generate tangible benefits. For example, by creating a more walkable and bike-friendly city, the city will improve community health and safety and lower carbon emissions. She linked issues relevant to the city department for action and proposes both grant funding and corporate sponsorships, demonstrating her understanding of project funding needs. That's very critical, and we're going through the budget process right now. She expresses a significance of understanding that garden plots are equitable to be located and accessible to all community members, and recognizes the social and health benefits of community gardens. So Sophia, congratulations again. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm 14 and in eighth grade, and I go to Lake Oswego Middle School.
Very good. Now, one of the themes you mentioned in your essay was making bikes more accessible for kids. Do you, one thing we've been dealing with is the e-bikes. What is, do you have any ideas on how we could make e-bikes safer and more accessible for kids? What do you think? I need your help.
I think we could make a rule that kids can't ride e-bikes very fast, because when kids ride e-bikes too fast, they can lose control and injure themselves.
Yeah, that's right. And I put you on the spot there. That was a very good answer. What was your kind of favorite part of your essay, the most important thing for you?
Uh, my favorite part was sustainability, because we need to take care of the earth.
Yeah, that's right. Really well said. You did a great job on the essay. Everyone, let's give Sophia another big round of applause. Congratulations. Anna has your post, your award there. So in closing, look for this group to be featured in our city email newsletter, The Lowdown. It's going to come out next Thursday, and in the June issue of the Hello LO, which is, of course, the print edition that we all get in the mailbox. First, second, and third places in each of the categories won a gift card to a local Lake Oswego business of their choice. And as I mentioned, our first-place winners in the two categories, so Cara and Sophia, were entered into the Oregon Mayors Association statewide contest for that chance to win the $500 grand prize. And, special surprise, we just received today notification from the Mayors Association, the results of the statewide contest, and we have some very exciting news. I'm thrilled to announce that Sophia Han, eighth grader Sophia, won second place in the essay contest, winning a prize of $300. Congratulations. Essays from all over Oregon, second place, a very good job. And in addition, Cara, Cara, Cara won first place statewide in the poster contest. Good job. Congratulations. Yes! Cara wants to see her sister. So you win the $500 grand prize, and, and you get to go, you get a trip to the Oregon Mayors Association Summer Conference, which is taking place in August in beautiful Baker City. It's gonna be great. We're all gonna have a great time. So everyone, please, another big round of applause. All of you gave us great ideas. You're all very We're all gonna have a great time. So everyone, please, another big round of applause. All of you gave us great ideas. You're all very thoughtful and insightful and took a lot of time putting together what you did. So for all of you and everyone who participated in the contest, thank you. We really appreciate your time and energy. Okay. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna take picture. Middle school kids, will you come on the other side of Joe, please? Come, 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 right here. Please. Little ones out in front. Please. Good job. Thank you very much. Yeah, don't worry. Now, everyone, we're just gonna take a brief five-minute recess here. We are back in order. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Next item on our agenda is the annual Meals on Wheels donation to the city, one of our favorite events of the year. So I'm going to invite to Judy Hathaway and the Meals on Wheels team to please come forward. Ms. Hathaway, good evening. Oh, everyone's, okay. Okay, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Buck and city councilors. Um, on behalf of the Lake Oswego Meal Network Advisory Board, we would like to present the city, who underwrites the Meals on Wheels program in Lake Oswego, a check for the funds necessary to make up the difference between what the program earns and the actual costs incurred by the city for the program. This amount varies from year to year and is dependent upon many factors, including the number of meals delivered, the respiratory care program, and dining room service. The Lake Oswego Meals on Wheels Board has consistently appealed for donations and with at least five annual events have raised the funds necessary to reimburse the city for this deficit every year to make the Meals on Wheels program in Lake Oswego sustainable. I'd love to present our board, um, for everyone. Where did they go?
They're right here. They're right here.
Good grief. Okay. Stand up, you guys.
That was funny.
Karen Alice Jones, Bob Irvin, and Kelly Laird, Malcolm Mathis, Hillary Hess, Lynn Brokaw, and Art Henderson. Thank you so much for coming, you guys. Appreciate it. So together, we present to you and the city of Lake Oswego, a check in the amount of $28,454.
Wow. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Thank you very much. And thank you all for the, oh, oh, the picture. She wants to take a picture. Should we wait till next Monday to cash this? Thank you. And thank you all for, for your work, um, on behalf of the community, raising the funds that you do and providing the service to seniors. It's so important, especially now, and keeping this program going is really now more important than ever. So, um, thank you, um, for all the dedicated work that you've been doing. I know many of you is for, for many, many, many years. Uh, this work supports a lot of seniors in the community, enabling them to stay in their homes and just provide, we talked about that, that loneliness epidemic, just providing the companionship and, um, uh, beyond just the food. It's the, 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 the social need as well. So thank you. We really appreciate your work. Yes, sir.
But just so you know, you're one of our good suppliers.
It's a great program to support. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Now, May is also Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And this year, we are hosting a free, family-friendly event on Sunday, May 18th, from 12 to 3 p.m. at Millennium Plaza Park. It's a great event. It's going to honor the vibrant cultures and contributions of our AA and HPI communities with cultural performances, martial arts demonstrations, food, vendor booths, music, and more. The city, in partnership with Respond to Racism, LO for Love, and the Lake Oswego School District, invite you, your family, and friends for a wonderful afternoon of culture, connection, and celebration. We look forward to seeing you all there. We are also, um, celebrating National Drinking Water Week this, well, right now, this week, May, May 4th through 10th. Drinking Water Week, it recognizes the vital role that water plays in everyday life for both water professionals and the communities they serve. Water providers, yes, yes, cheers, cheers, yes, cheers, yes, cheers. Well, that, that water did not come from our community this year. Water providers across, delicious, uh, across the region, including our Lake Oswego Public Works Department, maintain infrastructure and work 24 hours a day, every day of the year, to make sure that your water is always there when you need it. To celebrate Drinking Water Week, we call upon all community members to learn about the importance of water conservation, the quality of our drinking water, the infrastructure needed to deliver it, and all the people behind the scenes who make it happen. So here tonight, we have staff from our Public Works Department to recognize, yes, thank you all very much, to recognize and represent Drinking Water Week. And upcoming Public Works Week. So how you can participate, you can learn about our drinking water source and how our water is treated by signing up to tour our state-of-the-art water treatment plant, which is a great, a really great tour. And you can also take control of your own water usage and set conservation goals through our online utility billing portal, where you can monitor your water usage and sign up for automatic leak alerts, uh, which we are going to actually learn about more tonight in a little study session we have on the automatic, uh, meter, uh, program. And, uh, there's more information and resources all about this on the city's website. Okay. And now we are going to move into public comment. If you're here to provide public comment and haven't already done so, please just fill out one of these, these forms and hand it to Ms. Linder. But we do have one person who signed up, Josh, Josh, Josh and Carter Jaster. Please come forward. Please come forward. You have, um, uh, three minutes. Uh, we're glad that you're here. We look forward to hearing from you. And then, uh, the timer in front of you will keep track of the time. But welcome.
So my name is Josh Jaster. This is.
Carter Jaster. Um, I go to Forest Hills.
He goes to Forest Hills Elementary. And Carter, what's your favorite thing to do after school?
Um, playing bike riding with my friends.
So, um, we're here and it, great that we're following up the If I Were Mayor because we're here to talk about bike safety and intersection safety here. So, um, specifically, we're here to talk about, uh, the intersection of A Avenue and Fifth. And I lost my notes, sorry. Uh, on April 26th, I got a call as a parent that I never want to get, that my son had got hit by a car, um, riding his bike. And we get to the scene and the owner of Dukes runs out and shows us the video. And sorry. I've only ever seen it once, but I saw an image of my son going under the front of a car, like completely underneath. Fortunately, he's okay. And we're here to, uh, learn a civics lesson here, plus learn how to make positive change. So this is something that I'd never want to have a parent ever experience. Carter got a new bike. Uh, he got lots of new rules with it, you know, including only crossing A Avenue at, at a traffic signal and cannot ride up and down A Avenue. He was hit between the, uh, 7-Eleven and Safeway, just for reference. I'm not looking to blame anybody. I'm not mad at the driver. I'm not mad at the city. But we need to have a conversation about this, um, this intersection because I've long felt that it's, it's just unsafe. I recognize and appreciate the upgrades that were made. Um, I do see more cars stopping, but I've told my kids, you're not crossing there. You still aren't crossing there. Um, and we live in the Evergreen neighborhood. And it really only fixes one of these issues. Uh, as a local, we all kind of know not to turn down that, like, we avoid that intersection like the plague. We either turn at the one after or turn at the one before. We don't go down there, um, just because we don't know if there's like a kid that's going to run out in front of us at Dukes. If you're not, if you don't know what you're doing, turning right, difficult at best, trying to turn left, good luck. And I feel like if you're trying to go straight through that intersection at, at a normal daily time, you're kind of taking your life in your own hands. I understand as an engineer, like, the balance of trying to keep, uh, traffic flowing versus safety, but it's, it's getting to a point where I think it's too much. The officer that arrived, one of the officers that arrived at the scene actually got hit as well. And I'm sorry, I'm going to go a little bit over. Uh, he, he's been actually hit at that intersection as well. Lastly, if this happened in the intersection north or south of it, we're not here. I'm having a conversation with him just about bike safety. I don't want streetlights at every single intersection here at Lake Oswego. That's just not realistic. But I am here because I want to turn what was a, um, you know, could have been a terrible tragedy and hopefully, uh, to maybe save somebody else's, uh, self, save somebody else's life or, you know, prevent somebody from getting a serious injury at that intersection.
We appreciate you bringing this, uh, to our attention. And, uh, Carter, we're glad that you're safe. Very sorry that this happened. It's a very scary ordeal, no doubt. And, uh, thank you for taking the time to come here tonight and share with us. We appreciate it.
He's a much safer rider now.
Yeah. I know. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. And we're going to move on next to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda has item 6.1. This is ordinance 2959. Uh, this is an ordinance amending LOC Chapter 50, the Community Development Code, for the purposes of clarifying and updating various provisions, 2024 annual code updates and adopting findings. This was LU 24-0029. Item 6.2 is Resolution 25-21. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement number three to the sub-recipient agreement 24-006 between the city and Clackamas County Human Services Department Social Services Division for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. And item 6.3, which authorizes the city manager to sign a donation agreement for a planned gift to the Lake Oswego Public Library. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move. Yeah, move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion is made by Council Rupert, and seconded by Council Winland. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes seven zero. We also have, uh, for councillor consideration only, Resolution 25-22. It's a resolution of the councillors of the city council approving the appointment of an alternate to the library advisory board. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 25-22?
Move to adopt Resolution 25-22.
Second.
A motion made by Council Afkin and seconded by Council Corrigan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An aye abstain. It passes six zero with, uh, mayor's abstention. All right. And now to council business, we have the smart water meter project update. Director Rooney and team. Great to have you all here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hang on just a second. Okay, I got the short chair again. This happened last time I was here. Hang on a second. Maybe. Let it be. Good evening, mayor, councillors. I'm Erica Rooney, Public Works Director and City Engineer. And it's actually, um, very exciting to, to be here tonight. I'm very proud of the fact that this is all about public works tonight. We'll be in front of you three different times this evening. As the mayor mentioned, both in the, the Drinking Water proclamation and then a little bit of a preview to the fact that later on in the month is Public Works Week. It is this evening, uh, three very, um, special things that we're going to be talking to you about. So it's befitting that we have a number of our public work, public work items on the agenda. The Smart Water Meter Project, a special procurement regarding a stormwater, um, permit contract. And then we're going to do in, in the evening with a discussion on pathways. So you'll see me up here a few times, but really, this is about the rest of public works. The staff that you're going to hear from tonight is just a small, um, sample of all the kinds of things that we work on in public works. And so you might see some new faces, maybe some faces that have been around for a while. We just want to share the fact that there are so many things that we do do in public works. And I think this is great that tonight we can share a number of those items with you. So what we're going to do is get started with, um, the smart water meter project. And for some of you who've been here a while, you might remember we started some of this maybe before COVID. And for a variety of reasons, as we alluded to in the report, um, things got delayed, COVID being a big piece of it. Supply chain, once again, being a big piece of it as well. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in, in detail as they do a presentation. Um, this effort has been led by the Public Works Department, but we've been partnering with our folks, I don't know, nope, we lost Sean. Um, our folks in the Utility Billing Department are as well, they're a partner in all of this because with the smart meters comes the part that you alluded to, mayor, where you can actually get online and track your water. you can actually get online and track your water use. And we'll talk about that in more detail. So tonight, for this portion, for the Smart Water Meter Project, we have Katie Kirkland's in the audience with us, our communications specialist who's had a role in the information and education around this, Joel Kunkke, our Assistant Public Works Director and former Water Superintendent, Jason Hoy, who works on water conservation. He's our water conservation specialist. And so all of these things come together, along with Brad Stevens, who is in the audience, there we go, helping with the end product, which is your utility bill, right? So we're nearing completion of this project, and we want to share the success story behind it. There's several benefits that they're going to allude to in here, including water loss accountability, leak detection, which is really helpful on a case-by-case basis for the homes, and improved sustainability, you know, which is outlined as part of one of our goals in our climate action plan. So it all kind of is coming together, and this is a great project that shows that multifaceted aspect of it, that we are doing good things in that area. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to the team. I'll step back and let Joel and Jason present to you more details about the Smart Water Meter Project.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Joel Kunkke with Public Works. So let's just go into, what is a smart water meter? Smart water meter, sorry. Mouth's a little dry. Smart water meter is AMI, which is what we call AMI, Automated Meter Infrastructure. What that means is, so in the past, we had a direct read meter. So we had a staff member, we actually had a contractor go out and physically read all the water meters, one like this. So you had somebody riding around on a scooter, you've probably seen the person out on the little red scooter buzzing around town, has to stop at every one of these meters, writes it down on tablet, then sends it to Brad towards the end of the month, billing cycle. Now, with the new meter, which are basically the same, they look a lot alike. The newer one just has this little box on the side, which is a battery, lasts about 20 years, so we get a good life out of it. It just takes the same numbers that we had before and sends it via radio signal. It's a very small radio signal, about one watt, so less than your old cordless phone, sends it to a collector. We have about eight collectors around town, takes that signal and converts it via cellular back to Brad's software. So it takes the human aspect and human error out of misreading meters, takes that all out of it. That signal gets sent about every 15 seconds, so it's very continuous. So with that, comes into some of the benefits. So like Mayor was talking about, the portal that homeowners can sign up to pay their water bill, they can actually see that daily or hourly water usage. So they would be able to see, set up alerts, so if they're out of town and their water meter gets used, they could send them an email and say, why is my water being used? Same with on the city side, is we monitor that also. So if there's continuous usage in the water or overage, more water than they would normally use, we can send the homeowner a letter saying, hey, your water usage is high, you might want to check into it, or they can send out a public works person to check on it also. That's a great benefit. One of the big benefits that we can see on our side is, we have a thing called, we call it move-in, move-out. So if a resident moves out of a house, we go out and physically go out and read that meter. When they, a new person moves in, we go out and read that meter again. We can literally take that off the table and just do it within minutes on the phone. So now we're not sending a person in a truck out to do that, to take that time, driving, part of the sustainability. We don't have to drive, and the staff can focus more on other water issues. That's one of the big benefits towards the staff. Now moving into the, just the beginning of the project, how it came about. 2019, we went to council and received some funds to do residential meters. That's the largest bulk of our meters in the system, is residential. So that was the big fruit, right? So we could really get that out first. We tried to do that in-house. We started in late 2019. We did it with our staff and some summer help staff. We trained them up. It was a very cost-effective way to do it. We would do it through the summer season. Winters are basically, are busier time with snow and storms, so we kind of took that off the table. Then we had COVID. Supply chains basically just went away. We couldn't get the meters. We couldn't get enough staff to kind of help that process go along. So in 2022, we hired a contractor to help push this along. They've done great. We're at 99% of the system's done. Residential is the biggest part of that. We have about 343 meters left between residential and commercial, which is great. And I just got news yesterday that the rest of our meters have been shipped. We should get them in the next few days. So we should be able to finish this project by the end of the summer, which is, which is great. We've been waiting for it a long time. I've been working on this project for a long time, and I'm looking forward to it being over. So like I said, Phase One was residential meters. That initial cost was $2.4 million. Like I said, that's just residential meters. When we hired our contractor, that was an additional $395,000 to install all of those In the mix of that, 2023, we decided to move forward with commercial meters, which is like City Hall, Safeway, our big consumption users, right? That was an additional $1.9 million for those meters. And that additional meters to our contractor was $145,000, so it was actually fairly good for, that's a lot of work, bigger meters are a lot of work. With this whole part of the project, we didn't raise any rates. It all came out of the water fund. So that was a great, a great thing that we had available for us. So some of the great expectations and things that we've seen already is, with these newer meters, especially with commercial meters, they're a lot more sensitive. And everybody knows you've changed your shower head, it's low flow, or a toilet's low flow. Businesses are the same way. They've put all this water-saving things in their buildings, and the older meters can't pick up that flow. That flow is so small, we don't register that flow. Now with the new meters, we're seeing those flows, so we're finding a lot of that water loss, unbilled water, that Jason and all of us are looking for, right? We don't want water just leaving the system. Now we're being able to track that a lot more accurately. So, and the same kind of concept goes with residents, and we'll talk more about that later, but as a resident, when you go onto your portal, you can pick up those flows and see them yourself and go, I'm watering my lawn too much, or my son or daughter's taking too long of a shower. You'll be able to see where those spikes are in that water usage and be able to track some of that, right? But yeah, we have, we have been seeing some very good numbers coming back, that water loss findings are really helping us out. So with that, I'll pass it on to Jason.
Great. Thanks, Joel. All right. So now the meters are on the ground. What does that mean for the customers? Well, now what we can offer to the customers is that they can engage with this data on their own and look for these water loss activities on their own. So customers that are already enrolled in online bill pay can find this consumption tab on the city webpage and log in there and view their data usage. Customers that aren't yet enrolled in that, we're reaching out to through communication strategies, Hello, Lo, the Lowdown, some website upgrades, and billing notifications and messaging. And if we can feature those next to the If I Were a Mayor contest results, maybe we could get some extra traction, perhaps. So when the customers log in there, they can now access data like what's shown here. This is an actual account, and you can see this graph here shows their usage per day for this billing cycle. You can extend that monthly, hourly, or custom range here and see your specific data usage. You can also, as a customer, change this instead of usage in units to cost, to see what that water is actually costing you, which is a really nice tool to have. And if you look in the top right above that, Manage Alerts tab, that's of particular interest to myself, because this alert system now allows customers to sign up for leak notifications for continuous consumption over a certain period of time and/or consumption thresholds that they can set tailored to their particular use per household. Those are customizable options. All they have to do is enter the email address and opt in for those alerts, and they can get that message notifications. So that's all great. New data available through AMI. Let's take a quick, just step back here and show the old, the former, well, the current utility billing system, but this was relied on for detecting some of these leaks and some of this higher consumption. So this was a particular customer that reached out to myself in utility billing. And if you see January of 2025, you see a little bit of a spike in usage, and then it really jumps up in February, and then ends in March there. What had happened is this customer had an irrigation leak that started in January and continued through that time period for a couple factors. One of them being that he was enrolled in auto pay, so his bill was being paid, and he wasn't aware of the increased cost that he was costing him. And it was also not surfacing leak that he'd saw, that he'd seen, so he wasn't aware of it. It wasn't until the folks in utility billing reached out to the customer directly with a letter that said, hey, we noticed a big increase, you might want to look at this, that he determined that he did have a leak. So it was, over the course of two billing periods, this leak went unnoticed. And just on the right, there's a quick blurb showing his appreciation of the city efforts, and also showing that the customers do want this data to make informed decisions on their own. So now let's jump to the current available data here, just to look at a couple customer conservation cases that I've worked on that can highlight some of the benefits of AMI. The first here is Mr. Larry Lakeside, that may or may not be an assumed name, who is part of my job to monitor major usage and any like strange aberrations in customer usage. So this account jumped up on my dashboard in late January. You can see pretty minimal usage and then a giant spike there to the tune of 15,000 gallons a day that this one residence was using. So I called him on the phone, and he was greatly appreciative of the telephone call because he was on an extended vacation in another country. So he was completely unaware of this occurring. So he was able to coordinate locally with someone that came in and shut off his water to stop that leak from happening, but it still resulted in over $300,000, or, excuse me, over 300,000 gallons of water lost on that particular leak. Luckily, there was no damage. They were able to find and repair the item when he returned. But what the AMI data and the leak alerts can help Mr. Lakeside here is that he can opt into those notifications, and when he's out of town, if a leak were to happen, he would have known right away that this had started and could have cut it off really early there. That's just one case where these notifications can be of use. The second, Ms. Wendy Waterwise, she called to discuss a high bill that she had received, and I spoke with her, and I pulled up the data, the same data that's going to be available or that is available for the customers now, and I saw a large spike in usage there that you can see in the middle of the chart. And I walked through the typical steps to identify a leak. Nothing was leaking in her home. And she called out a plumber, and it turned out to be a non-surfacing service line leak. So the service line that supplies the home with water was leaking, and she had to have that repaired. Unfortunately, this happens, but fortunately, with consumption threshold limits and leak alerts, they could identify this quickly at this point, so cases like this wouldn't go on for an extended period of time like this. And the final quick case here, this isn't maybe one that would benefit directly from notifications, but just showing how the data can be used as a quick diagnostic tool. So this customer called me concerned with high water usage and a high bill. So I pulled up the trend, and I see this cycle occurring each day, and after some troubleshooting, determined that their programmer for their irrigation controller had been set to run multiple times a day. And on top of that, if you really get into it, it's running for a pretty extended period of time. I'm not one to tell somebody how to manage their lawn or how to maintain it, but at 300, or 3,400 gallons per irrigation cycle, three times a day, I can fairly confidently say that's maybe overwatering. So they were able to adjust that. And this is all done over the phone without any field investigation with this new data. So those are a couple cases, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the pretty typical trends that a user can see for water consumption. So what you see here is just a 24-hour period of usage. You see fairly standard diurnal flows here. Water is used in the morning, a little bit throughout the day, and peaks in the evening as appliances are ran and things like that. Nothing out of the ordinary there, but what I want to highlight is during those periods of time where you'd expect no water loss, those wee hours of the morning, you are seeing that it's registering zero water use, indicating nothing's really leaking. If you were to log on as a customer and see a trend like this, with continuous usage at .46 units throughout the evening at a baseline, that'd probably indicate there might be a problem. My first suggestion to this customer would be check your toilet flapper valve. That's a pretty easy fix for a homeowner and a quickly identifiable. And then the final here, irrigation is, it uses a lot of water when we come into the summer months. Water demand increases pretty significantly, and this residential irrigation case here over the course of a month is a pretty typical and respectable watering cycle. You see about three times a week, some breaks in between there. You know, they're doing what they need to do to maintain the lawn, and as a user, you can log on and see that pretty standard trend and know that everything's in order. And if you're feeling lucky, we can drill down here on Friday the 13th and see that their irrigation is being programmed to run for about an hour in the early hours of the morning, where evapotranspiration is minimal, and they're getting the most effective watering out of their programming. So I just wanted to highlight those few cases and those few trends. These are going to be, this is a tool that's available for customers to make these informed decisions with this data that we now have with all these, with the AMI project complete. Thank you.
And I just would like to add, great job. When he was talking about their out of town and seeing their water usages and finding leaks, the difference between the old system and the new system was when the old system, the meter reader, would go out and read the meter and put that data in, well, it'd take that week or so to get back to us. And so you're talking about that water leak would last a month before, because depending on when the meter reader would come. So that water at your home could leak for two or three weeks, they read it, goes back to Brad and says, hey, we got a leak. Now we can see that basically instantaneously. So we'll be able to catch those leaks, and even homeowners will be able to catch those leaks quite a bit faster, which really cuts down on that water loss.
Yeah. It's a great program. Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have an idea of, so how many folks have signed up for, you know, they have the online access?
It's about 21,000, but then it could be some complication because thousands of folks have signed up.
Sure. 21,000. And how many, what's the goal? How many, what's 100%?
Well, we have 12,500 water gallons, so it's difficult to determine how many gallons are signed up versus how will be.
Yeah, I see. So yeah, so it sounds like a lot, so a lot of people have signed up. I see. But not, it's hard to tell. And then, and once they're signed up online, they just get some access to everything. So these are folks that are signed up for like online, the bill pay. And I, so I have two questions about bill pay. When will it take American Express? And when? And/or an e-check, you know, like an ACH thing?
So interesting, you should ask about the e-checks. We just activated that. So if you are signed up for auto pay, or if you go in there and make your monthly payment, we will accept e-checks now.
Oh, that's great.
As far as the American Express. As far as the American Express, you'll need to talk to the finance director.
I see. Oh, is that really?
If you see that.
Uh huh. Wow, very interesting. Well, that's great. Well, it certainly helps with the, with the credit, you know, I'm sure tracking down the people that have expired credit cards and, you know, with the e-check thing.
Yeah, and it's one of the functions or functionality within the portal. The account holder will get a notification if they have a card that's expiring.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's good. And is there, it was great to know how sensitive the new system is, which is good. Is there like a system that we go through though to kind of like audit the system to make like over time, like how the devices, if they're functioning properly, or is it kind of just through the overall data that we're collecting?
The program on the city side, we can monitor that. It'll give us battery life. We actually have alerts if they actually disconnect the antenna. That senses alert that there's a disruption with it. So if somebody's tampering with the meter, we will be able to see that. Our plan is, and that's why we originally started the city in a clockwise position doing zones. So we know the battery life is 20 years. We would start systematically beyond, go back and just taking pieces of the city and going back systematically and changing. So we're not into a big full process like we are right now. 20 years from now, probably technology is going to be different, but we did try to think ahead and figure out we could just do it in a systematic way in smaller chunks.
That's great. And what, I'm just kind of curious, do we know, like what does the average household use in water each day? Do you guys know?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Brett.
You probably have the actual average.
Not specifically for the city, no.
So it varies quite a bit between the summer and the winter. So when people are irrigating, there's a lot more water that's used. So we generally say typical consumption is eight CCFs per month. So a CCF is 748 gallons of water. During the summer, that would be a fairly low number. When people are irrigating, they'll be up into 20 CCFs. But you know, you have smaller households that don't have a large yard and don't irrigate and they'll maybe use three CCFs of water a month.
Right. So it is a, I love this tool myself. I mean, it is really helpful to see and being able to see the cost, because honestly, it is surprisingly how, I mean, the whole bill is expensive because it's got the sewer and it's got the street charge and all that. But when you really look at that daily cost of the water, considering what we're getting, it's very cheap. It's like five, you know, something like four bucks a day to have fresh water coming in. I mean, it's quite a deal.
And for us, the system is great. I mean, you've heard about some of the advantages from a conservation standpoint. One of the biggest advantages is from the customer service perspective. You know, before we switched over, customers would call, we could tell you what the reading was at the beginning of the month and the end of the month. We have no idea what happened in between.
That's right.
So we have so much more information that we're able to use to help those customers figure out.
That's great.
You know, when they use the water, where it went.
Can be kind of empowering too, because you really can take a look at your daily usage and then if you're not happy with your water bill, you know, kind of adjust accordingly other than just getting the bill and be like, oh, how did that happen?
We do, we do get a lot of customers that call. I mean, we all handle it. Jason handles it. And we can drill right in and go, look, your water, something happened at midnight, you know, on this day, what happened? Oh, my son left the garden hose on outside or something, watering, you know. So we can figure things out and see, you know, oh, I was out of town, but you know, why does my water always get used when I'm out of town? I mean, we can pinpoint those things very accurately now.
Very cool. Counselor Willen.
Do we have a program where something happens where, because our water is very expensive and once you reach those thresholds where it goes over their minimums, whatever CF, whatever they are, that we don't really overly penalize customers where they use, like this person who, who used on your slide 34,000 gallons or 300,000 gallons in that cycle, that would be a really expensive situation. And it, it doesn't cost us, seems like cost is, is the water, obviously, but we put some pretty big tiers on the water. So it's not necessarily the resident's fault. Maybe it is, sometimes it's not. Do we give them a break of some sort? Is there a way that we can work with them so that they're not?
So we do have a leak adjustment program, so we will adjust up to two months. And once the customer has submitted an application and demonstrated that they repaired the leak, so they submit a receipt, an invoice. It may be something as simple as they bought a fitting down at Home Depot and did the repair themselves. We'll adjust the two months. We compare the current year consumption to the prior year consumption and we split that difference with them. One additional thing we do that, that makes it even more beneficial is we mark all of that extra consumption down to the lowest tier. So for most customers, it ends up being about 75% of that, that water consumption. And like I said, we'll do up to two months, which gives the customers enough time to figure out that they have a leak and get it fixed.
Great. And then the other thing that I, I will say, I want to give you guys credit, it wasn't necessarily in the report. It looks like we put this in just, just so that we could get online information from your reporting. I think there's another reason that, I was on council when we went through this that was very pertinent. We really needed to replace a lot of the water meters in Lake Oswego anyway. And so I know we look at it and we're like, wow, $4 million to spend on new water meters and a few people get to save on their, on their water and we don't pay the guy going around collecting. In reality, there's, we needed to do this as a city anyway and we have the benefit of replacing those with automated systems. So it was a plus-plus everyone around, but I just wanted to make that note because I don't want people to think that we just wanted to have an online system to watch our water and pay four and a half million dollars for that. It was needed to do anyway because we had old equipment and old valves and stuff, so.
Yes, it's a great point.
So anyway, just wanted to, you guys didn't give yourselves credit for that and you should, you should have that credit as well.
Good move. Thank you, Counselor Willen. Counselor Afkin.
I love this program. I love digitalization. I love automation, but I hope you realize that the data that you're providing to households are going to create tensions between the family members. Because it's going to be, why are we doing this? But my question is, those people who were going around and reading the water meters with those red scooters, those scooters, does the city own them? And if so, where are they? Can we start using them?
No, we contracted that out and the contractor owns those scooters.
Okay.
So they still have other cities to read. It turns out there's only one company in the area that manually reads water meters. So they'll still have some cities to read and use for those scooters.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Director Rooney. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution 25-20. It's the resolution of the City Council acting as the Lake Oswego Public Contracting Review Board pursuant to ORS 279A.060, adopting findings and approval for a special procurement for professional, professional services and exempting the contract from competitive solicitation in order to negotiate a professional services contract with Brown and Caldwell LLC. We will start with a review of the hearing procedure by City Attorney Ms. Hosenak.
Mayor Buck, members of the council now, it's the time set for the public hearing on Resolution 2520. This is a public contracting policy decision that is within your sound discretion. It is discretionary, but of course it must also comply with state and local contracting code, which is why we brought this, what I would characterize as a largely technical housekeeping hearing before you to exempt this contract from special procurement. We're going to begin with a presentation by staff. We can take testimony from the public for up to five minutes and those time limits don't include any time taken up by questions from the council or responses. I need to ask at this point if there are any financial conflicts of interest, reminding you that ex-party contacts and site visits don't apply to legislative hearings. And I'll pause a moment. Seeing none, we are ready for the staff report, Mayor.
Okay, we have Director Rooney and Ms. Charbonneau joining us.
Great. Okay, part two of the evening of Public Works. So as our attorney mentioned, this is a special procurement for professional services. We do this from time to time on special situations where it's imperative that we have continuity from the past. And that's really what this is about, is that this is a longstanding program that we've been involved with, that we are co-permittees with other agencies in the region, and we need to get on board with the same consultant that they're using. There's efficiencies involved in that. There's just a myriad of things that we talked about and reasons and the findings in the council report. And so with me tonight to just give you a very brief overview of this, if there's any questions, is Megan Charbonneau. And Megan is new with us the last couple of months. She is our new stormwater quality coordinator. We've had Sonia Johnson appear before and so they're transitioning. Sonia's becoming more of a project manager for Capital Projects and Megan has taken over in the stormwater quality coordinator, which means she has a lot of regulatory responsibilities to adhere to, reports to make, annual, annual reports to produce for DEQ. And one of those things here is updating our NPDES permit. And so that's what this is about tonight. Megan does come to us with a lot of wealth of information from her experience on the private sector, helping industry implement those permits. So we're extremely happy to have her with us and she's here learning for the first time how to do a special procurement with the city of Lake Oswego, following the new ORS, for her new ORS process. But really, this is very much a technicality that we just want to get through this evening and hope that if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. I'll turn it over to Megan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So today I'm here to adopt the finding, hoping that you'll adopt the findings for supporting a special procurement to assist with the 2026 NPDES MS4 Phase 1 permit renewal application to direct a hire for Brown and Caldwell. I know that's a mouthful. A lot of acronyms in my industry. To put it simply, it is the stormwater permit that the city holds. This gets renewed about every five years and this comes down from EPA. It goes to Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. They oversee, they enforce and implement. And the stormwater permit as a whole regulates the discharge to U.S. waters to protect water quality. So as I stated before, the previous permit was completed in 2017, at least the application was. We, then 2021, it was rolled out and then it goes through about every five years. So the current renewal application is due April 3, 2026, which seems like a long way. It is not. It's a lot of work, a lot of graphs, a lot of data that needs to be collected and that's why we need to hire a consultant. So why do we need the special procurement? Well, because the contract would be over the $100,000, it's approximately $167,000. We would typically go through a standard request for proposal. However, doing so would delay onboarding by several months, not only that I would have to find a consultant that knows the current permit and knows our data. Brown and Caldwell was the one that did our last application in 2017, so they have the templates, they have the data that we would be working, building off of. And they are also currently collaborating with our co-permittees because we are in a permit with other cities. We're in a clackamas permit. They have been working with our co-permittees currently and as well as the Association of Clean Water Administration. So they have a wealth of knowledge and also that brings me to substantial cost-saving benefits because the co-permittees are working with Brown and Caldwell that aligns us to share those benefits. So we recommend that you approve Resolution 2520 so I can get this started. Does anybody have questions for me today?
Any questions? Made a great case. All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone here to testify. Is anyone willing to testify? Tony, you want to testify? No? Okay. All right, then we're going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Resolution, sorry, 2520.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Counselor Willen and seconded by Counselor Verdic. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, great job. Okay, is everyone okay to keep moving here? Everyone okay? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a study session on the Transportation Advisory Board Priority Pathways Group 3. Mr. Will Farley, Assistant City Engineers, joining us, and Director Rooney.
Okay. Okay, so for our last presentation from Public Works this evening, it's going to be about pathway prioritization. Again, we're trying to continue one of the, this addresses one of council goals to develop and build more pathways throughout the city. We've been in front of you many, many times to talk about this topic. You're well aware of how many pathways we have identified in our transportation system plan and that it's a long and arduous process, but we're going to get there, project by project. And TAB, or Transportation Advisory Board, has been our conduit for prioritization in the past and they've made the suggestions for the projects that we've already built, the ones that are in design, and have also come forward with suggestions for this upcoming CIP process, which we're about to finalize hopefully in the next couple of weeks with the Budget Committee. However, in this case, staff would like to have some time with council for you to consider some alternatives to part of what TAB presented back in the early spring. And we're looking for some direction from you all so that we can finalize the CIP proposal prior to Budget Committee, which is on Thursday. So I know you'll all be back here. If we need to make any adjustments to it, this is the time to do it. So in front of me tonight, of course, we have Will Farley, who's wearing many hats tonight. He's playing traffic engineer because he is and he's wonderful at that. And he's been intimately engaged with TAB over the last five years, several years, defining the priority projects and is well-versed in what their position was, why it was that way, and then is bringing to the table this evening his professional recommendations on maybe some alternatives to what TAB presented. Lastly, the other piece in the room is, oh, great, Tony came forward. Tony Vandenberg from Lake Oswego School District also has a project that he would like to talk to, to speak about, which is McEwen Road. We talk about it in the report and Will's going to speak to it as well. And then if we have questions, we can certainly have Tony come up and give some presentation about that as well. So we'd like to start off with Will's and then we'll go from there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. I'm Will Farley, Assistant City Engineer. I'm here to kind of preview the Transportation Advisory Board's next recommendations for pathways and to seek direction on where to focus our funds on for this next biennium on pathways work. So kind of brief agenda, we'll start with the background, go of how the program came about, go through some recommendations and to some of the alternatives. Going way back, about a decade, back in 2014, we adopted our transportation system plan. This plan had over 200 projects identified to accommodate transportation in the next 20 or so years, with 132 of those projects being focused on bicycle and pedestrians. And 2019, about five years later, City Council came up with a goal of let's start chipping away on some of these projects. They charged TAB with identifying projects specifically around schools that we could start knocking off the list. Since that time, each year, City Council has continued to have the same sort of goal of improving transportation connections, mobility and safety for all travelers and all types of trips specifically around schools, or especially around schools. So back in 2019, TAB started taking that list of 132 projects, taking it down to 43 that they thought would benefit schools. A methodology was developed at TAB that kind of ranked those projects based on four criteria. Roadway functional classification with arterials being the most important roadways they have pedestrian facilities on. School type, projects being closest to the schools getting the most points. Proximity to school, or school type being elementary school, elementary schools being the ones that get the most points because they're younger children. Proximity to school with the projects closer to the school getting more points. And then completions of gaps. And then completions of gaps. So filling in that missing link kind of rose the project up a little higher as a priority. So from their work in 2020 and 2019, they had these seven projects identified, and I kind of listed the score that came from their methodology. These projects scored at least 15 points, and of the seven, five were funded, or four were funded, sorry. So Group 1 in 2021, Douglas Way was the top one, served Lake Grove Elementary. Halenan, right there behind Halenan Elementary, was next on the list, followed by Boca Raton, helping serve Forest Hills Elementary, as well as the Red Fox Choughhead. And Lane Wood and Douglas Circle, over there on the east side of Boones Ferry, to also help get kids get to Lake Grove Elementary. So everyone loves a good before and after photo. I'm pretty sure most of you have seen these photos, or at least walked on them since they've been recently redone. This one's Douglas Way in front of Lake Grove Elementary. Here's Halenan, right behind Halenan Elementary, Boca Raton, and then Lane Wood and Douglas Circle, which were just constructed last fall. And I'll fly through those. So moving on, in 2023, the Transportation Advisory Board, after they saw that their projects were being funded in design and for construction, they went back to the board. They looked at all the projects scoring 13 and 14 points on their list. And from this, they came up with the four, these four projects. Pilkington Road, Carmen Drive, Tree Top Lane and Meadowlark. We have 90% design on these now, and I kind of go over these, just what we've seen in the last submittal. Pilkington Road will provide 475 feet of new concrete sidewalk, will provide four new parking spots, will make three new ADA compliant curb ramps, and improve crossings at Rosewood and Willow Court. This will help kids get down Pilkington all the way from Boones Ferry Road down to Gene Road, where they can then go to Lakewood Junior High. Next one was Carmen Drive. This one was very well advocated by the community on Candlewood Court. This one would span 1,440 feet between Quarry Road and Wiluga Drive. It will provide a new sidewalk and bike lane on that side of the road. We are also providing nine streetlights to light this area. We've got response that this was a very dark area when people were driving it. We thought it would be a great time to add streetlights to the mix. We're getting four new ADA curb ramps. We're improving crossings at Wiluga Drive and Candlewood Court. And we're also providing stormwater treatment near Candlewood Court. Moving on, Tree Top Lane is over by Lakewood High School. This one will provide a connection from Fernwood Drive all the way to Overlook Drive, where a sidewalk can then get them over to Lakewood High School, or even the new Recreation Aquatic Center. It'll be 1,300 feet of new concrete sidewalk, provide five new ADA curb ramps, improve crossings at Overlook, Tree Top Way and Fernwood Drive, and will preserve the existing trees and landscaping, since we're actually building this one into the street instead of going back on the properties, similar to what we did with Halenan Street. And Boca Raton. Boca Raton, we also built into the street. So, and then on the other side of Overlook, we have Meadowlark Lane. This project will construct 920 feet of new sidewalk between Ridge Point Drive and Overlook. We're also extending the sidewalk around the corner on Overlook, so people don't have to cross the street at that intersection. They'll be able to stay on the sidewalk all the way to the frontage of the school and then cross at the mid-block crossing there. They're getting one new ADA compliant ramp right there at Overlook, and we're going to improve that crossing at that intersection. So now that you know where, where we've been, or what we've been doing the last five years, I'm going to go to TAB's recommendations for 2025. TAB revisited the projects from the original 43 list, their 43 project list, and looked at those that scored 11 points and higher, as well as went back to the unfunded projects from the first round to see if they could find specific segments of the projects that weren't funded on Boones Ferry Road, Bryant and Godal, that made sense, that what are the highest priority? Can we do a smaller project with a bigger impact? And since I've showed the other projects on a map, I always like to show kind of where these highlight towards near schools. So I included that one on here. And then I'll give you the same information I kind of gave TAB on these projects. So Bryant Road, they specifically came out looking to complete the missing area between Upper Drive and Lakeview Boulevard. This would be about 850 feet of sidewalk that we are assuming to be five-foot curb-tight. Of course, this is across the railroad area, so there are going to be some utility conflicts. We expected that this one would be about $2.5 million when comparing to $22 million that would be needed to complete the entire project from Boones Ferry Road to Childs, putting bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of the road. This is the segment they thought would provide the biggest benefit for all pedestrians.
You can get rid of the railroad along that.
I'll work on that one. So on Godal Road, they identified three segments, or yeah, three segments that they kind of valued higher than others, that would complete the connection from Hazel, which is the access to the high school, all the way to Country Club to the south. These three segments either didn't have any facilities, in the case of one in front of a county property, were gravel facilities, or we were missing a small segment on the corner of Country Club. So these three locations would cost roughly about $1.1 million. We would need right-of-way from one of the properties that are in Clackamas County. We would need to construct stormwater facilities on this roadway, and we need to reconstruct about four driveways. I mistakenly fat-fingered the report and said 2.1, but it was $1.1 million for this project. I apologize for that error in the council report. So next one that they wanted to recommend to council was Atwater Road. The board believed providing a pathway along the frontages of two properties would benefit pedestrians walking in what they felt was an uncomfortable area. Staff estimated providing about 325 feet of six-foot pathway in this segment would cost us about $400,000. The project would need to acquire right-of-way, one of which is from a property in Clackamas County, would require stormwater facilities, and it would be subject to a road transfer from Clackamas County. Atwater Road is still a Clackamas County roadway. And then O'Brien Street, some on the board believed that enhancing a segment of unimproved right-of-way on O'Brien would be a cost-effective project to take on. The project was estimated cost about $225,000 to improve an existing connection through the accesses of two properties. So while staff is on board with providing improvements on Godal and Bryant, we had some concerns about the projects on Atwater and O'Brien. Atwater Road is still under the jurisdiction of Clackamas County, as I mentioned, and it would need to be transferred to the city before we could start the project. Additionally, to be built to our standards, there would be significant impacts to the frontage of two properties that, to accommodate the stormwater facility and the pathway. For the project on O'Brien, staff believes this project would only benefit roughly a dozen homes by improving an existing stairway connection to get to Laurel. And would also impact two properties that take access in the unimproved right-of-way. So due to these concerns, staff is bringing forward some alternative considerations in lieu of those projects on Atwater and O'Brien. One alternative would be to construct a pathway on Fernwood Drive between South Shore Boulevard or Green Tree and Tree Top Lane. This project would connect to the pathway that's currently being, hopefully being constructed this summer on Tree Top, and would provide a walkable route for many areas to reach Lakewood High School, which is actually a school that often has issues accommodating all their students with parking. So providing big benefit to walkability. Another alternative would be to construct a pathway in cooperation with Lake Oswego School District on McEwen Road between Christie Way and 65th Avenue. This will help connect many of those residents to River Grove Elementary. So kind of going through in the similar vein I did on the last slides, Fernwood Drive was a project that the Transportation Advisory Board got to see. It is in our transportation system plan. The actual project in the TSP calls for 1,800 feet of five-foot sidewalk. The cost of this would be about $2.25 million. We'll need a little bit of right-of-way. We're going to have to improve ADA on about five streets and have quite a bit of driveways to be reconstructed. With some of their concern about the cost on this one, staff did bring forward an alternative that looked at Green Tree to Tree Top. This reduced the distance to 1,100 feet of sidewalk that's probably in a more difficult area to walk. We'll still have some tree impacts. We'll still probably need a little bit of right-of-way, but we won't impact, will impact half as many homes, and we'll still improve ADA on three streets. So the cost was brought down to about $1.4 million for this option. And then moving over to McEwen, the project on McEwen would construct 1,500 feet, hold on. While this project was not identified in our transportation system plan, we did hear about it at the Transportation Advisory Board, and it has been requested through the land use processes associated with the relocation of both the Lake Oswego School District's bus barn and the remodel of River Grove Elementary School. The school district has contracted out a significant portion of the design for this pathway due to that demand, and, but does not have sufficient resources to fund it through the construction. Staff does want to note that 90% of the properties that this project would serve are not within the city and do not pay to our street fund. And then going into kind of the assumptions, we looked on this one, it's about 1,500 feet of sidewalk that would cost about $1 million along the north side of the road. The school district has indicated that they could commit about $200,000 towards the sidewalk, reducing our cost to delivering the project. It was designed within the existing right-of-way, so we expect little right-of-way to be needed to be acquired. It would have tree impacts. We would have to do some stormwater infrastructure, and several driveways to properties within the county would need to be rebuilt. So to kind of wrap this up, staff is seeking the direction from City Council on where to focus funds for the future pathway work. Either take TAB's recommendation on Atwater and O'Brien, on Fernwood, either from Tree or from Tree Top to either Green Tree or South Shore, or on McEwen as a partner with the Lake Oswego School District. And with that, I turn it over to questions.
And just a reminder too, we have, Tony, did you want to provide any comment on your project?
Put me on the spot?
Sorry. You knew that was going to happen. Well, I think it's appropriate to give you an opportunity.
Like, is that million-dollar project cost? Is that the entire project cost, not factoring in the contribution of the school district?
That's the total project cost that we're estimating at this point.
So we'd be out of pocket, $800,000, and you've already designed the project?
We've committed already $150,000 approximately for the design, site investigation and so forth. An additional $200,000 would be our contribution at this time. Anything beyond that, I would, of course, and including the $200,000, I would have to go back to our school board for final approval, depending on where we land tonight. My interest in this McEwen pathway is part of the project that was just completed this year and opened up for the first time this year to our students with the new River Grove Elementary School. During the design, throughout the construction, I maintained close contact with the neighborhood, our direct neighbors, our parents, our students, all of which during this process, you know, brought up this pathway as a really important need for the school and the surrounding community. The school serves students in Lake Oswego School District, the city of Lake Oswego, as well as the city of River Grove and elsewhere. We draw from all sides around the school. We have pathway connectivity through the site, which was determined during planning and part of our approval process. We've approved or improved the pathway in front of the school already, with significant improvements to the pathway connecting out to Pilkington, and took it upon ourselves to produce a design for this new pathway that would bring us down to 65th on McEwen, completing the sidewalk across the entire frontage. I think it would be a great improvement. It's one that I've heard about quite a bit, and I think hopefully we can get there.
Could you just quickly state your name for our record?
Yes, my name is Tony Vandenberg. I'm the Executive Director of Project Management for Lake Oswego School District.
And thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. I appreciate the school district's partnership on this, and Director Rooney, as you guys are working together. I know when we first brought this project up, it was looking very difficult with different right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, the trees and all that. So I really appreciate the work that appears to have been done together to streamline the project into something that is clearly much more feasible than what we had originally looked at. That would definitely be a big benefit here. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Vandenberg? Okay, Counselor Boop, and then Counselor Afkin.
Yes, thank you, Will. It was really helpful. No, my, I don't really have a question. I just want something we, no, no, yeah, like my question, it's a...
It is a question. Question period. This is a question.
It's like the city of, the school district, I remember we worked with them on that thing, you know, the sidewalk and the bus barn. We all see what the neighbors, you know. So we've been, Will, I think our objective was safe route to school every time. I mean, so I don't know why, can I return the question to you? Because yes, you are seeking advice from council, but you know also that council has always put emphasis on safe route to school. We want the project to be where our children are walking to go to school. So if we have to choose, I think that's, you have a mandate a long time ago that it's safe route to school. So McEwen would be the place to go to. If we choose between Atwater and all the other thing, it's a, I, my question is that, that you already have the answer.
Maybe he's asking why. It does seem like it, for a pathway that's so close to an elementary, right adjacent to an elementary school, in particular, how did it score so low?
So McEwen Road, let's see if I can remember the scoring. It's on a local street, so it didn't score very high compared to those on neighborhood collectors, or major collectors or arterials. The closest proximity to the school and the closest proximity to the school and the elementary school gave it its most points. So those were the highest priority. And it didn't complete a gap in the system. So there was, there's a little bit of a sidewalk all the way down on Lakeview, but nothing on the side streets to off of it. And there's a pathway that leads to McEwen. So it didn't get many points on those. It still scored, I think, I want to say it was 12 points. I did list it.
Yeah, you listed.
But, and it wasn't on the TSP. So Transportation Advisory Board, it wasn't in that initial 43 projects that they got to review. They were charged with reviewing the transportation system plan projects. This one did get scored because it was brought up at TAB. I'm like, here's what it would score, and that's why it shows the 12 points.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And Counselor Afkin?
On Mc, I have never been able to say McEwen, but I'll give it a try now. 1,500 feet for a million dollar. It seems to be the least expensive option of everything we had. Is this because of the scope of work is not as extensive as the other locations?
It is relatively flat. There's stormwater and tree impacts, so it would be in it. A lot of the other projects identified in our transportation system plan, all the easy ones have been built. There's no easy pathway project.
Okay. Thank you on that. The estimated cost of 1 million, is that including the $150,000?
Yes, that's total project cost.
That's total project cost. So in reality, it's $750,000 for the city if we wanted to go that direction.
And this, we did not receive a detailed estimate, so I will say that this is, it's probably a true estimate. probably a true estimate, I mean, it's...
Okay. And then...
Could be a bit more.
Understood, thank you. The next question maybe for the director, so if I look at the options, like, for Atwater and O'Brien is six hundred twenty-five thousand, but the alternative that we're talking about, Fernwood and McEwen, it's two point four million, is that the reason you wanted to get a direction tonight for the Budget Committee?
Yeah, so the, thank you. Yes, we wanna know if you wanna do O'Brien and Atwater, that's one, and could it be replaced with the Fernwood, or could it be replaced with McEwen?
Okay.
So it's not doing McEwen and Fernwood, I don't think we can do that, doesn't pencil out over the next few years because of how much money we have available.
It's still about three hundred twenty-five to four hundred thousand dollar delta?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it'd be Fernwood, or it'd be McEwen, or it'd be...
Brian and Atwater.
O'Brien and Atwater.
Okay.
That's sort of how we wanted to package it.
Thank you. The, I noticed that the staff had concerns with Atwater and O'Brien. Did the Transportation Advisory Board hear those concerns?
I relayed the concerns about Atwater Road being within Clackamas County, and I did discuss that Atwater or O'Brien was such a small segment in an area that probably wouldn't serve. There was discussion about how there's already a stairway there, but there were a few members that thought that because we're already asking for Goodall Road and Bryant Road, and those are two million, they're one to two million, they wanted a smaller set of projects in there. So they thought O'Brien was a small enough one that they would include.
Okay, thank you on that. Did they know about the McEwen Road option?
They did not have the McEwen option in this last set, because again, it wasn't our transportation system plan, and we are only looking at prioritizing projects from those forty-three that were listed to start.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you, Councilor Afkin. Councilor Wenland?
Where's your money coming from, Director Vandenberg? The hundred and fifty, or the three hundred thousand, or whatever you're...
Yeah, the funding would come from the 2021 bond program. We have a component for safety and security. There's also funding that remains in the River Grove Elementary School project set aside for a project like this.
So, I mean, we're just in the question phase, I guess, or comments, I don't know. I'll just throw in a comment. I totally get it, I, you know me, I would support this to no end. The problem is that we just have one house that's actually in the city that pays taxes towards this funding, and it's not on the T S P because it's not in our town. I mean, this road would be a county road, is that correct, or county pathway?
McEwen is a mess.
Yeah, we took over jurisdiction in 2012 of the roadway.
So it is our road now. Well, jurisdiction, what does that mean?
It's a complicated relationship with the county when we do road transfers, and if you look at the annexations, it's a checkerboard like you wouldn't believe. So, we would still have to have some involvement with the county because parts of this road haven't been annexed, but we took over maintenance responsibility for it back in 2012 to make it clear on who's supposed to stripe what section, because it used to be, no, that's yours, this is ours, that's theirs, this is ours. What we did is we said, we'll take care of maintenance, because it's so cumbersome to have two entities running over each other. It's still, parts of it are not annexed into the city. Half of the road, half of one side of the road is theirs, half is ours, it's ugly, we think we can get through that, but that was also why it was a project that wasn't part of the T S P. At the time, it was too complex to, I can't remember all the details, but at the time, it was not the best fit to put into the T S P.
Okay, so we...
We've had a lot of people ask us to put it in since then, and I'm sure we'll the next time around.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, and I've heard about this roadway even almost before they redid River Grove, I mean, it's been on that list, it's just that we always said it belonged to the county, and we didn't have jurisdiction over it.
We have some jurisdiction.
So legitimately, we could say that we have jurisdiction over the road, and it could be our responsibility to provide a safe pathway to River Grove. You were a taxpayer in Lake Oswego, you were pretty defensive about your money going towards Lake Oswego projects, could we justify it as a city to say that it is under our jurisdiction and that this would qualify under that?
I think that's a question that is better left for you all to answer. I'm not a taxpayer and I don't set the rates.
Well, okay, then let me ask this question then.
That's, that's the question we're actually asking.
That is the question.
Well, I understand that, but, I guess it's, I did not know necessarily that we had this agreement, or whatever, this new, that we have jurisdiction over the, so we have responsibility for taking care of that road now.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. So, over the course of time, we will continue to have responsibility over the sidewalk as well.
I'll tell you, you know, I, when they first brought the project to me, I had the same reaction, it's like, well, this is a tough one politically, you know? But then, it kinda, I think that's the reason, like, the partnership with the school district makes sense, 'cause to the extent that it's serving the unincorporated residents, the district, but district constituents, you know, the district is participating in the project, and then, of course, the kids that attend the school are a mix of unincorporated and Lake Oswego residents, so it's not just completely not serving residents of the community, it is serving residents of the community, and it's very true to the purpose of the bond. If we were just doing it alone, I think it would probably be a non-starter, but the partnership with the district, I think, is what, for me, is what, like, okay, well, this makes sense, you know?
To that, I was going to say, if you came up with, you know, I would say half the project, but if you could find it in all the bond money, I'd be willing to throw in the other half, for sure, because I think we have enough students coming from the city of Lake Oswego that would be across, you know, so I'm, it's, and then I would go to, what's the little city next to us?
River Grove, yes.
River Grove, to their city council, and that's probably their, I mean, if you ask them for a hundred thousand dollars, that's probably eighty percent of their budget, but maybe you could ask for a hundred dollars or something, so that maybe, I'm just kidding, but, I wouldn't ask that. But I think that would give us justification to support this, and we could support it politically to say that we are spending money on our citizens for a partnership with the district, and I think I would be totally a hundred percent, I could justify that. I just think we just need to be careful about when we put these, it's always ranking your children in these things, and when you go one project over another, and then somebody gets kind of mad that they're lower on the totem pole, and then they start bringing up all the stuff, I think we could justify this very, very well under those circumstances, so, anyway. And I agree with the Atwater, no, and the other little step thing, no. I mean, I, I think TAB made the right decision based on their rationale in going through this, but I would say take them off the table, because, especially Atwater, that's in front of two houses. I understand what they're doing, I know that road extremely well, but, hey, they just got it paved, so they're already ahead of the game. It was a horrible mess for forty years, and they finally got most of it paved, so they can live with that for a little while, until they all annex into the city.
It's another complic, it's another complicated road too, that we, the county has ends, or in the middle, and we've got ends, it's not a pretty sight until we get that fully transferred.
Right, and I think, let's wait until more people join the city.
Is that, and you did mention too, the impacts to the, to the two properties, that is, and significant, I mean, are these property owners hypothetically, if we, are they on board with this, or do they not know about it?
There hasn't been any outreach to those two property owners.
I see, and it's like their front yard, is that what, type of thing?
Rod iron fence and some brickwork on the county property, and some significant hedges on the other property.
County property, county-owned?
There's a county, a citizen that is still in the county, not within Lake Oswego.
Oh, okay, but it's a, it's private property in the county, oh, I see.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Wenland, especially on that O'Brien, you know, I, again, I see what they're trying to do, but...
They already have it there, so they can...
Well, the good, 'cause to me, it's like the two that really most impact, I mean, are like routes to school, if you will, are the Goodall project, for sure, I mean, hands down, and in general, just, we've got, someone complained to me about Goodall, and the McEwen project, I mean, those are clear paths to school that will get widely used by kids on a daily basis, great. You know, and the Bryant, so why, I just wanted to, Bryant, why can't utilize the kind of the path, construct along the path on the other side of the road, sorry?
We looked on the east side of the road, and there's already a retaining wall and two properties on that side. We were looking to accommodate a full pedestrian's five-foot sidewalk at least, to get separated from traffic.
There's no way to do it on the other?
It's really difficult to do it on that side with the property impacts, where the other side, we'd be cutting into a hill, we'd probably need a retaining wall, and there's only one property on that side.
Gotcha, okay.
On the west side.
Do you have a, Councilor Corrigan here?
So, my, my question, I'm still not doing it right.
It seems like it's on...
It's green, it's not working, oh, there you go. My question is, do we have a sense of how many annexations are happening out there? Thinking, I mean, if we think about schools, we think about the future, we know that those properties do come in, do we have any idea about, is that happening at a steady rate? Could we justify a decision to support this because we know these properties are coming our way?
My opinion is it's not gonna be very soon, there are no sewer facilities nearby for them, and they're all on septic, and they will continue to be on septic. They're far enough away from existing sewer facilities that they won't be required to hook up, so we aren't, I'm gonna use the mouse here a little bit with the hand, this area in here is, there's not a lot of, since I've been here, we haven't annexed any properties here. Where we annex them is a little bit more over in this area on the fringes of this unincorporated part of town, and then down here, nothing's changed along McEwen in the last sixteen years that I've been here.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, so I don't see those coming in along that frontage anytime soon.
If we did, if we had the two, so you, so we have the budget this year to do, for instance, like, the, we could do Goodall, Bryant, and McEwen as a set, we have the budget to do those?
We will have to stagger this a little bit because of the price tag, but what we wanna get is make sure we get the prioritization so that we can put it into the, to the, you'll see this on Thursday, the CIP funding plan, and you know how we do two, two years are funded based off of how much money we have available, and then the next four years are hopeful, very hopeful, based off of projections in the street fund. So, if we change one of them, and we say it's gonna be a million instead of four hundred, then we wanna see, does it fit? At least gets us set up on what the next ones are. Would they all be packaged together? I can't answer that unless we, I mean, to be honest, like, McEwen might be its own, it's gonna be a real challenge, that probably should be its own project regarding implementation and construction, whereas Goodall and Bryant could maybe go together as one contract. So we'd have to play with the timing, but at least it would tell us what the priorities are.
I see. Would, Mr. Vandenberg, I'll put you on the spot, would it be possible to communicate with us a more kind of firm commitment from the school board in terms of what they're able, you know, with the funds in that bond, what they'd be able to commit to the construction of knowing that we just have kind of a back of the napkin, you know, how much, what's kind of the uppermost amount they'd be able to put towards the project?
Yes, I can, I can bring that forward and share with staff.
Would everyone wanna hear that information, is that, yeah? Okay, Councilor Raf, yeah, please.
Two tennis players walk into a bar. Bartender says we don't want a lot of racket. No, I'm just kidding, okay. I'm kinda with Ms. N, like, you know, our focus has always been and will continue to be safer schools and supporting, you know, our students' access to not have to drive and, you know, safe places, or safe ways to go. So, I would only just say, if it was me prioritizing it, I'd say, which roads, which pathways impact the most students? And so, I mean, that's how I would look at it, and, you know, if that's Fernwood, 'cause Lake Ridge is right there, and that's, you're gonna, you're gonna help out, I don't know, five hundred kids a day, like, versus one of the other ones where it's fifteen, like, that's the way I would look at it, and so, that's the only feedback I have, but I would, that's my, you prioritize the kids over anything else, so.
Thank you, Councilor Raf, I like that, yeah, Councilor...
Definitely Bryant, definitely Goodall, and I am in favor of McEwen Road for a couple, three different reasons. One is, when you have a space that has multi-jurisdictional involvement, it's hard to get things done, and now we're talking about kids walking through there, and from my perspective, it's not a political issue, it's, we have an opportunity to make sure kids are safe, and especially, especially if we have a partner like Lake Oswego School District who's willing to contribute, maybe a little bit more, contribute, that means we have a partnership to do great things at Lake Oswego. So, that's where my head is at.
Okay.
Can I, can I suggest a motion?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, yes, Councilor Verne.
Why didn't you see a yellow light on it?
It's 'cause it doesn't work.
Oh.
No, well, I've been telling, I've been getting...
Oh, you've been telling? I haven't.
I've been trying to get your attention, and you were like, my mic works, my yellow button doesn't work.
No, Councilor Verne, I'm sorry, I'm very sorry.
So, I, I'm mostly in line with what my colleagues are saying, so I'll not repeat everything. I do wonder though, between Bryant and Fernwood, was Fernwood talked about much or not? I mean, especially now that we have the Lorac up there as well, I'm just thinking that's...
Yeah, that's...
I spoke to, I spoke to the Transportation Advisory Board a couple times about Fernwood, 'cause that was my, that was, in the eleventh hour, that was my recommendation to get us to, a way to recommend a list of projects, and I brought forth the second scenario of, like, even Green Tree to Tree Top serves a whole bunch of properties, several side streets off that segment, and Green Tree has a sidewalk as well. They didn't seem to take that recommendation, they were looking more for a more lower-cost project, and that's why the Atwater and the O'Brien one came forward, is like, we're already asking for two million for Bryant, we're asking for a million for Goodall, we generally only get four million the last couple bienniums, let's put some smaller projects into that pot.
I'm just kinda curious, maybe from your perspective, how does Fernwood and Bryant compare? Especially in terms of, I mean, I know it's probably hard, but like, in terms of kids and...
Fernwood, I think, provides a really good connection to the future Tree Top Lane and to Lorac. Bryant, the sentiment on Bryant was that is a really uncomfortable walking area on that little shoulder path, and providing that connectivity sets us up to provide connectivity up to the shopping center, gives them connectivity down to Lakeview where there's a sidewalk west of one of the properties, that it starts providing much better connectivity to get to easier walking areas.
Well, I was just gonna, again, if we're prioritizing kind of kids and getting to school, I'm not sure that Bryant is a great connector for our businesses in our neighborhood, and I don't disagree with anything, but if we're saying that the schools is, like, that's what we're doing, doesn't it make more sense with that logic to do Fernwood? That's my...
Just prioritizing.
Just prioritization. So, that's that comment, and I agree with Councilor Wenland, you know, again, I'd like to see a little more from the schools in terms of McEwen. I think because there's so much going on, I wanna support that area, I think making sure those kids can get to school safely, we've heard from people over the course of many different discussions, the importance, so I, let's try to figure out how we can make this happen on that one. And finally, I just wanna do, I realize Atwater is way down, there's a lot of issues, but I know, I've been approached by members who live on that street... But I know I've been approached by members who live on that street, especially where you've kind of, it's been narrowed down where the hill kind of crests. They're really concerned about safety on that road. And it's great that we have, it's paved, that's all great. And I understand we've got county, but I don't, if anything that we can do as those homes are getting brought into the county, making sure that we get that connection done, if there's any partnership we can do on the county. You know, I do understand in terms of some of these other things, it's not as close to schools, again. But I do think there is a definite need there. I'm not sure at this point I would prioritize it over McEwen or even Fernwood. But I, I just want to put a plug out for those residents on that street who've come to me over the last five years, and who have said they've been trying to work with the county and the city since the 90s. And that there's agreements that were made and then lost, and it's like a big hot mess over there. So if you guys can just keep plugging away and trying to figure out some solutions, it would be really appreciated.
So, thank you, Council Verdick. So, we kind of have a general consensus around the O'Brien, let's just, O'Brien, we can take it off the list. Okay. And Goodall is intergenerally in favor of Good, no? No, Goodall? That's a good one. That's a good, it's right by the high school. Yeah, that's a good one.
That's a good one.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
And, and is everyone generally in favor of us getting more information from the school district?
Absolutely.
And McEwen pursuing this partnership?
Yes.
Okay, that's the last. So then, now, and we know that Bryant is a good project, and Fernwood is a good project. So let's talk about how, what direction we could give to prioritize between, eventually they will both get done. But which should the, we direct the team to kind of look at first, Council Corrigan?
Yeah, so I think one of the things we might be overlooking is where the kids go in the summertime. They go to the swim park. It's very close to that. Yeah, and that's a railroad crossing, so I think we have a, I don't, that's what I think.
Okay, okay. So you would prioritize Bryant first. You like Fernwood, but you would do Bryant first.
The other thing is the kids that go to the swim park are younger than the kids who are making their way up to Lake Ridge High School.
I know. Do we have that other, because I mean, that stretch of, of Lakewood, you know, headed towards the swim park from Bryant, you know? Sorry.
Lakeview between South Shore and Bryant?
Between South Shore and Bryant. Is that, that's the TSP project?
There's a project identified in the TSP for that segment, too.
Awful. And then there's always these puddles that are mini lakes, yeah, and you gotta go out in the road, yes.
So I guess my only, I agree kind of, but if, if that section of Lakeview, kind of, from, I guess, is it?
South Shore to Bryant?
Yeah. Is already kind of a hot mess. Yeah, that'll be great to get the kids down there, but we still, you know, is that still going to prevent them from having, especially if we're talking younger kids who are potentially already crossing some busy roads? I mean, is, is that really a high-walkable, or will it be a high-walkable area?
Well, exactly. Well, is there, would there be efficiency to doing it all, like, I go once? Like that, Lakeview and Bryant, like, would that be a potential? Or is that project like, just too, it wasn't even on the list?
Yeah, Lakeview Boulevard between South Shore and Bryant wasn't on the list for the school pathways. The, where Bryant came in was because it looked at the entire segment from the TSP, from Boons Ferry to Child's. And if you're providing connectivity from Royce to Gene, that's real close to school. So that's why it scored close on proximity for the entire project. This is just the segment that they go, this is one we wish we would build because it's so hard to get down that hill.
And I, I would, I would agree, there's a lot of traffic that goes down that. And I would, I would support, it's number one on the, on the list, or on the map. And I think it's, it's vital. That's a dangerous area, and I think more and more kids do.
So you'd prioritize it over Fern, Fernwood?
Yeah, I mean, Fernwood is still pretty residential, and you've got, that's a major, major thoroughway with cars going through there. If you've ever been there at between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock, or in the morning, it's nonstop cars.
Oh, yeah.
Going, and, and it's probably the, of all the intersections, or of all the projects we're looking at, it's probably the highest traffic by like a factor of 10, I would say.
That's true.
So, I would give high support for that.
Do we have consensus around that? Bryant, Bryant, right? Okay, so we're hearing a Bryant, Goodall, McEwen prioritization with, but we like Fernwood for the next batch, but O'Brien, and, and then Atwater down the road.
Keep working on it.
Down the road.
With that, with Atwater, to, to Council Verdick's point, what happens out there? And it actually does annex more often than other areas, because those properties are large. When they come in to develop, that's when we get the frontage improvements. And on the east end, in the last four, five years, we were able to get some frontage improvements and got that piece of pathway and stormwater facility put in. And then, of course, it just stops waiting for the next properties to redevelop.
I think unfortunately, it's like, it's stopping at like one of the worst points.
I know.
I know. It's like a, it's, yeah, you're gonna get hit at either end.
So, again, if we could just keep.
Yeah, more likely to get those frontage improvements because they are redeveloping there, as opposed to like, McEwen is not redeveloping actually.
No.
Yeah.
That's a good point, too. Okay, yeah.
Like, this is a question, because really, like, Lakeview, between Lakeview and Bryant, coming from Billington, like, the, coming from Billington between Lake, in, it's like 200 feet before Bryant. It's, you know where the apartments are.
Yes.
I am an adult, I walk to school, but every time, it's, it's just a matter of time.
Yeah, what is, is that a potential to?
Yeah, it's very dangerous.
Go around the corner and connect to the, to the existence?
So, we, we have had a request to fill in that gap right there on Lakeview. We are looking at ways to do so. There's possible development on that corner that may have to improve their frontage. Or we may be able to fit it into a project. We don't know which way. But with a project like Bryant, we likely wouldn't leave that gap there.
Oh, good. Oh, that's great. I like that news. Okay, well.
That, that measure twice, dig once theory? Good.
No, that's good.
No, I hope we can do that, because otherwise, I do feel like this project, in some ways, it's like, it's important, but it's like.
You're still screwed.
It's still kind of, okay, great, you're down safe, and you're.
Depends on what direction you're going. Yes. Thank you, ever, thank you, everyone, for the good work deliberating through this, and thank you, team. Thank you, Mr. Van Buren, for being here.
Yes, thank you. One more meeting.
So I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes, sure.
Just to confirm, we'll come on Thursday night to the Budget Committee, which you all are a part of, right? We'll have Goodall, we'll have Bryant, and then McEwen would be the third one on there.
Sounds great.
Is that how we want it presented?
So one, one, two, six, and five?
One, two, six, yeah, and five, well, five would be in the next batch, but yes.
Right.
Yeah.
A good, a good project.
Yes, on the map, on the screen.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, how, could you just, you know, we've, we've disbanded TAB. How, as we go forward, how will we kind of work through these projects?
They've made it through their 43 projects for prioritization. So they finished their original goal of prioritizing those. Further prioritization, we would probably bring in front of council. Okay, we can go back to those scoring, we can get direction on new ways to score them, if you're satisfied with school. There, there's other ways we can come and prioritize which projects need to be in the budget next.
Okay, that's good. We had a lot of fun doing this, so, can't wait to do it again.
That's what TAB, it, it was a great project for TAB, I have to say. That was.
They did a great job.
Their purpose has been fulfilled.
Yeah, it's, well, it's great to see all these projects, I mean, just going through the history. Look at all these connections that are being made, and people are using them every day. And I do like when you can, like, that Douglas circle, you know, you built it kind of in the, and then narrowed that roadway. That's like the biggest thing of all, because then everyone has to slow down. You see it. I mean, it's better than our, you know, we love our 20th plenty, but that's the best thing we can do, make the roadways a little bit smaller.
Do we?
We love it. All right, thank you very much. Thank you all. Now we have time for information from council. Any, Council Afghan?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know when was the last time we sunsetted advisory board, but 50-plus advisory board, we sunsetted that. And Maria Begolo with Parks and Recreation did an amazing job recognizing those advisory boards who could not continue, and their terms had come to a closure. And in July, we will start the new.
It's like a rebirth.
A rebir-, a birth, not a rebirth, birth of, of the Community Resilience and Health Advisory Board. So, that was a, an event that I wanted to report that. Thank you. And of course, the, the talk of the town is Lorac. And I have yet to come across somebody that says, the building is just okay. Everyone has high regards, excellent project, excellent. They, they, this is a common thread that I had from a whole lot of people who talk to me. They're proud to be Lake Oswego residents because that building provides so much for Lake Oswego residents, as well as how beautiful it is.
Thank you, Council Afghan. Thanks for your good liaisoning to the 50-plus. And then you will, the Community Health Board. Council, any, Council Corrigan? Update? No?
Chamber has their wine walk in Lake Grove on Saturday.
Oregon Wine Walk?
So, this coming Saturday, if you want to spend some time at your local merchants and support the Lake Grove business community, this is your chance. The tickets are still on sale, and there's still some left, and they would like, like to sell out.
It's gonna be a gorgeous day.
It's going to be a great day, so, join one, join all, and make sure you're there.
Thanks, Council Wyndland. Uh, Council Verdick?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to shout out to the library, the L.O. Reads has wrapped up. And the comments that we have received from the programming this year, I mean, it's always strong and very positive, but this year, it's like out of the park. So I just wanted to shout out to that staff. They really just did a phenomenal job. It was a great book and great activities around it, and very well-received by the community.
That's awesome. I heard the light, the speaker talk was, was very good.
Like, the best.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. Thanks, Council Verdick. No? You got nothing? I just, sharing from some of the regional discussions, you know, at J-PAC, we've got to move forward the first phase of the I-5 Rose Quarter project, so that, you'll see that construction start. It's going to add some, not like new lanes, but more like transition, you know, merging lanes and stuff like that. You know, when you have to get on at the, if you're leaving the Moda Center, and there's like that short gap, you gotta move over, like, that's all going to be improved. So that will be nice, improved safety over there. We're also, they're doing, Metro's doing this community connector study, which is kind of of interest to us here. We often talked about a community connector. They want to get a kind of program like this into the 2028 Regional Transportation Plan. So maybe then that's something we'll be able to adopt into our own transportation plan update. And then TRIMET, they're concerned about their funding, but what's new? Metro has this Future Vision Commission. They're going to have a future vision, so, I know, I know, I know. Library, coming from the county, the library, we've talked about the library task force. So Director Kelly is serving on, she was selected to serve on this library task force that the county has going. She's library director representing an urban city. And I don't think, what else is going on? Oh, and then we had the, this past weekend, you know, Northwest Housing Alternatives hosted the 49th Annual Lake Run on Saturday. It was a great event. Got to go down there. Lots of families, kids, all of that. And next year, of course, will be the 50th, but it's great that Northwest Housing does this stuff, because it's a fundraiser for them. They are, have the two low-income senior housing projects in Lake Grove, and they've just been a great neighbor, you know, for a long time. So, it's good, and lots of other participating sponsors and community groups were there as well, so, wonderful, all right. Ms. Phelan?
Yes, Council, I just want to thank those of you that were able to come to the ribbon-cutting of the Lorac. And I do want to just acknowledge, I think, every single person from the Parks and Rec staff that was able to be there was there that weekend.
That's great.
All those resources to make that event go off, and that we were able to open all the recreation side of the, of the facility things, the wait-in room, the gym, the fitness room, all those amenities are open, and the golf course, of course, and so we're just so thrilled to have that available to the community.
We talked about how Daniel Lynn got himself into the center picture.
No.
We talked about that for a second?
I didn't see the pictures.
I mean, I'm just calling it out, so.
All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.